We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If anyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, could you please call the roll?
Audemars Matthews?
Here.
Audemars Sage?
Here.
Audemars Malamoy?
Here.
Audemars Burgess?
Here.
Audemars Pinter?
Here.
Audemars Schmidt?
Here.
Audemars Black?
Here.
Audemars Harmon?
Here.
Audemars Bray?
Here.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and start out with a proclamation, and I wanted to have a proclamation celebrating the life of Reverend Frank McSwain Senior and declaring December 8th, two days ago, to be Reverend Frank McSwain Senior's Remembrance Day. Are there members of the family, the congregation, who'd like to come forward and accept this award? Excuse me, proclamation, please. Thank you. Come on up to the microphone, and especially if afterwards you want to say anything, you're certainly welcome. I do want to say that when I first heard of Reverend McSwain's passing, it was certainly a shock, sad moment in many ways, but I also immediately then went to talk to staff about making it Frank McSwain Day, and I was told that you can't. And I said, "What the [cough] do you mean, we can't?" And that was because there already was a Frank McSwain Day, and that is March 8th, 2009. And so what we have, if you will note, is a Reverend Frank McSwain Senior Remembrance Day. So that's how we got through all of the legalities. But if I could go ahead and read this as part of a celebration of life and the contribution to our community generally and to social justice much more broadly. Proclaiming celebration, celebrating the life of Reverend Frank McSwain Senior and declaring Reverend Frank McSwain Senior Remembrance Day. Whereas Reverend Frank McSwain Senior was a longtime Bloomington resident who dedicated his life to many important community initiatives and served Mount Pisgah Baptist Church since 1984, and whereas he was instrumental in the Not In Our Town movement in our community, the Bloomington Normal Chapter of the NAACP, the Family and Community Resource Center, youth summer jobs programs, Westside Development, and much, much more. And whereas he was a tremendous leader for social change and social justice in Bloomington, and whereas he received several distinctive recognitions over the years, including the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Award, Cultural Fest Award, Merlin Kennedy Community Service Award, and the NAACP Lifetime Achievement Award, and whereas his giving and compassionate nature transformed many lives. And whereas Reverend McSwain passed away from this world on Thursday, November 29th, and whereas the community wishes to celebrate a life lived so generously, therefore I tear it in a mayor of the city of Bloomington to hereby proclaim Saturday, December 8th, 2018, as Reverend Frank McSwain Senior Remembrance Day. And I've got extra copies with City Seal.
Just would like to say thank you on behalf of our family, to you all and to this community. Daddy loved Bloomington Normal with all of his heart, and there are many times I'd be in the car riding down the street, and there'd be people walking down the street, and he's like, "That's my friend this, and that's my friend that," and I'm like, "Okay." But he truly loved this community, and I knew it because he would sacrifice time with us to be in it. And I know we were, you know, his top priority, so while it hurts our hearts that he's no longer here, it's just beautiful to see the impact that he's had on so many lives and the outpouring of love and support from not just this community, but our church, Mount Pisgah. So we are truly honored to be his family members and to be here to celebrate with you guys, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and again, I'm sorry for your loss.
Good evening, everyone. My father was a man of peace. Peace. One thing I can say that I believe, I mean, everyone would kind of recognize and acknowledge about what we need in this world is love and peace. But the love comes naturally. Love is, it should be natural. That's what we do. We live to love. We forget that because of different aspects of life, but love is, love is something that's so pure that it should not have to be a struggle to do it. Peace is what is needed. Because when you have peace, you learn love. When you have love, you learn peace. It's almost like yin yang. You know how that works? But what I want everyone to leave here with and to continue to live with is peace. Peace. There's a peace about this whole situation. He's gone physically, but peace. Peace. You can't, you can't beat that. You know what I'm saying? You can't beat it. Peace. Peace. Whatever you have going on, I speak peace into everyone's life and heart. To this community, I speak peace. To this world, I speak peace. To what I don't see, what I don't know, I speak peace. Because that's what we need. Love is not, love is, man, it should be natural. There's a lot of love that you can give, agape, you know, there's a lot of different forms of love, but peace is what is needed. Peace of mind, peace of heart, peace of spirit. Peace. That's what we need. And until we realize that, there won't be peace. We have to make sure that people understand that my father was physically here. Yes, he was here. Yes, he was powerful. Yes, but if you watched him, peace. If you seen him, peace. Peace. So outside of everything going on, outside of my father transitioning, so much has happened in this city, in this world, that, you know, it's too much going on. You know what we're missing? Peace. Peace. And I believe that every heart in here can say that there's a peace about you that you can't understand. It, I'm going to speak it into everyone's life. I'm going to speak it into the world. Peace. Because that's what's needed. The love should have been, my father wasn't teaching us love. That, he wasn't doing that. Everybody has a heart. My father was not the last person to leave here who was so impactful, who was, "No, no, 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 no." He just did his role, what he needed to do. But when you watched him, there was peace. So I want everyone to understand that the family, yes, were hurting naturally, but there's a peace about us that can't be explained. Peace. And I thank you all for everything. Peace. Remember that. Peace. Can you say it? Peace?
Peace.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to our public comment, and just to clarify, I do have the equivalent of a town hall meeting every other week, and I want to thank all the women and Mayor Pro Tem, Karen Schmidt, for handling this last Friday. We had a mayor's open house. In the mayor's open house, you can come in every Friday before a city council meeting from 4:30 to 5:30 and get answers to your questions. You can talk with your neighbors about certain kinds of issues, maybe get answers or problems solved on the spot. And so I certainly welcome you to that. When it comes to the public comment portion of our business meeting, our policy is to not respond regardless of the comment. So at this point, we have three people who have filled out public comments. We start, excuse me, with Scott Steinle, then Marty Seigel, and then, I gotta use my glasses, I'm sorry, oh, Richard Watts. Thank you very much. And we'll start with Scott Steinle.
My concern is with the street flooding that I brought up before, that it still has not gotten any better. I would suggest the city get out and put in the storm drains, raise the streets if they have to be raised first. I know Jim gets tired of hearing me talk about this. If they have to raise the inlets, fine, do them. Then do the street. Do it at once, and don't do it three or four times. And then the city wonders why they're running out of revenue? I don't. The thing with, and this happened Friday, was my garbage day. They, somebody just reached in there and grabbed it, went out to get the can, and there's still garbage in it. So they, Jim sent a truck out on Saturday, which makes a lot of sense. They can't do it the first time, even with the automated trucks, they can't do it. And the taxes in this city keep going up, and the services keep going down. Now, there are people that are just leaving the city again. I wonder how many more people are going to leave the city. There they go out of the state, there goes the state revenue, there goes the city's revenue, and the city can't control their spending. I would suggest they start learning to live within their means. What happens in your private households when your expenses exceed revenue? You're in deep trouble, right? What happens in the city's case? They just raise taxes. And then you wonder why people are getting fed up and leaving the city? Right there. The other issue is the potholes in this town, and I know there's a pothole line, and they're all over the city. You know, the thing is, we've got, when they said they were going to raise the gas tax, it was going to solve the problem. It didn't. You just redistributed the money. You wanted the leaves raked to the curb. We had, they were raked to the curb, and we had a big strong wind, and it came and redistributed them. And then you wonder why people are upset, right there. Let Tim Gleason get out and do it himself, if they have to have help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Marty Seigel, and then Richard Watts.
Hello. Good evening. I've written emails to you folks, but I really didn't have confidence that the issue was clear and thought probably it was worth discussing, mentioning publicly as well. Many years ago, I had to replace the sewer and water lines underneath my house. Since then, I periodically investigated replacing the lines to the street. I've been given so many different answers by both the city and the repair companies over the years that I'm still postponing the work while I occasionally have tree roots cut away from my lines. I once was told, for example, that I would have to pay for the work under the street to the city line across the street. I've also been told that the city, that my line connects closer to my house. But meanwhile, I've also been receiving often enough offers from insurance companies selling protection from service line, for service line breaks. The most recent was about a week ago, and all have been out-of-town outfits that I know nothing about. And since my property might, in insurance terms, be considered one with a pre-existing condition, I would suggest that it's difficult to imagine that any company really wants to insure my property at all, and I would also suggest that maybe there's, it's not gonna, they're not gonna, they don't want to do it. So we, I think we need to know what all this means. I don't understand why the city would be getting into the insurance business in the first place. I mean, they're supposed to be making money, I think. But I think the public first needs to be clearly informed about the current policy regarding responsibility for water and sewer lines, just exactly what's paid for. And for example, are the lines under the street in the parkway the responsibility of the city or the homeowner? The street and the parkway. Also, when there's flooding in our streets and the water backs up into our basements, who's responsible for the damage? This is more important in the central city because we have combination storm source. We're combination, so it's different there. And it's, and these, I believe, are the properties that are being targeted with this insurance. The question will become more important as the city pursues more redevelopment in the city, in the central city. And the addition of more paved land will certainly affect the amount of runoff that we have, which in turn is going to affect the flooding in our properties. So I really feel as though this is a cart before the horse situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Watts?
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the reason I wanted to be here tonight is because I've been becoming aware of the process that you'll be talking about later tonight and continuing over a period of time for use of community development block grants. And I have a concern that I'd like to put up front in your minds and ask your careful consideration for. I know that many of you are aware of a movement around the country to deal in a very creative new way with the issue of chronic homelessness. And that is to create programs of tiny houses for homeless people. These tiny house movements have been taking place all around the country, except here in the Midwest, but from New York to Oregon and Washington, from Texas to Minnesota. And the process is one by which houses are made about the size of probably your living room, but they put a roof over the head of the homeless, give them a sense of safety and security, a place that I can call my own, a place that is readily available to the social service agencies and the mental health needs that are part of such a community, and not incidentally save the public treasury a great deal because of their modest cost. For example, on one Saturday in September in a little town in New York State, something like 150 volunteers showed up and built six tiny houses in a day, the cost of each not more than $10,000. The track record so far is very good. Obviously, there are problems. There are concerns. You know some of them in this community when the question is raised about tiny houses. But the track record is very good in these communities of maybe five to six such But the track record is very good, and these communities of maybe five to six such homeless people are doing a great job of keeping their own rules, keeping out alcohol and illegal drugs, showing pride in the property, and moving out from transitional to permanent housing and new jobs. It's worth taking a very careful look at, and I hope you will from here on out in the process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We move along next to our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member of the city council would like to have removed for separate consideration? Alderwoman Schmidt?
Yes, I'd like to remove 7G.
7G?
G.
7G, as in George of the Jungle. Okay. Okay, G. Is there a, anything else? Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of the item 7G? Alderwoman Halman?
Yes, I, sorry, it's been a while since I've been here. To approve the consent agenda, agenda excluding item G.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if you'd go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Thank you. We move right along then to item 7G, and I'll turn that over to Alderwoman Schmidt, who pulled that.
Sure. So this is the water leak protection and the water line and sewer lateral protection insurance. We've had two public conversations about this. I know that the company has come back and answered a number of questions, and that's been valuable. As we've grown closer to tonight, to voting on this, I began getting more and more inquiries about exactly what this was all about, which encouraged me then to reach out and ask for more input. And I think that there is still some misunderstanding and some questions that need to be answered that I wanted to make sure were part of the public record. My first question actually has to do with whether we can decouple the water leak adjustment policy from the water leak protection and sewer protection insurance offer.
Yeah. Mr. Gleason?
I think we can. George, I would ask your opinion on how do we do that procedurally?
I think we could do it by making a motion to amend, to simply authorize the city manager to engage with Sunbelt Insurance for water leak protection and deleting references in the ordinance and in the policy to private water line protection and private sewer lateral protection. Having said that, I am not aware because of, so parliamentally, we can do that. I'm not aware if that affects what our position is with respect to Sunbelt in terms of negotiations. I'd leave that to Mr. Karch.
Okay. That's a good question.
Could be done through a motion to amend.
So essentially, we would, if that were the desire of the council, the opt-in portion would be removed, and only the opt-out portion would remain?
Well, I'm suggesting that we separate them and consider them separately, if in fact our negotiations allow us to do this. The way it's presented, it appears that they're.
Together. And Mr. Karch is coming up, and did you want to add anything to that? Okay. Just figured that you might be privy to the conversation that we're about to have. So Alderwoman Schmidt, did you want to go ahead and do that?
I'm not certain, are we, Jim, are we, are the negotiations tied together, or can we unbundle them?
Good question.
The leak protection insurance is the foundation for the discussion. So that's, that's the, that is the, it's not, that is not something that they offer as an opt-in. That's only an opt-out with the benefit that, again, for that first year, somebody has the ability, within that first year of the program, we'd be looking, if the council did approve it soon, we'd be looking at May 1st of 2019, between then and May 1st of 2020. If somebody said, "I didn't see it, I'd like to opt out," they could get up to 12 months of that money given back to them for their leak insurance. So that, the other, though, is an opt-in for sewer lateral and water. Nobody is, only, they would choose it only if they wanted to. We showed a lot of research, which provided a lot of other insurance companies vary on what level and what they offer. Some people do, some people don't. So this was another possibility for people, that is only if they saw benefit as they look at their own private insurance.
So we can split it?
So I can amend this particular recommended motion to consider just the leak protection and consider the insurance policy separately.
I think that's what everybody's saying.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I would like to amend this to consider the leak protection as a separate action item.
Okay. So is that a motion then to approve this, but with the leak protection only?
No.
Excuse me?
No, I would like to actually have two separate votes.
Oh, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
But I guess what I was asking is, is your, are you making a motion then to approve item 7G without the latter part? With only the dollar and five cents?
Yes, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Is there a second to Alderwoman Schmidt's motion to?
Address that tomorrow?
Oh, yes. Well, let's see if we have a second. Second. We got a couple of seconds. Alderman Sage is the one that I heard, even though I saw Alderman break starting. Yes, you wanted to address that. Now, we have a motion and a second, so it's relevant.
What I was describing was a little bit different, I think, from what Alderman Schmidt was saying. I was saying that you could consider a motion to amend, to authorize, to amend this item, to authorize the city manager to engage in the water leak protection, and to omit from the ordinance references the authorization for private sewer lateral protection and residential and sewer, I'm sorry, and the private sewer protection. So you could take a motion to amend, you know, the item.
Well, I think we did that, George, except for the word amend. I think when.
Well, George, I was suggesting that we have two separate motions. George is suggesting that we have one motion, and it excludes the water and sewer line protection.
Can't, can't we have a separate vote on that, George? I mean, in other words, if we accept Alderman Schmidt's motion, that was seconded by Alderman Sage, right? And let's say that, whether it does or doesn't pass, can't we then have a second, because it's on the agenda, second vote on the 489, 484 per month, that's out of the other portion of the ordinance that's on the agenda?
Just to get clear on that language then, is the language then to consider them, to consider them separately? Is that what you're?
Yeah, the motion that was made is to approve what is presented in front of us, except for the opt-out, excuse me, the opt-in portion of the motion. So that, except for 484 per month and 660 per month, Alderman Sage, excuse me, Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Sage, approved that piece of what has been presented in front of us. So is there any reason why we can't vote on that first, and then see if there is any support for a motion for the second part? As long as it's on our agenda?
Well, there'd have to be, initially, there'd have to be a motion, I mean, a vote on her motion, that's correct, and then you could.
See if there's any support for the other part? Okay, all right. Well, at this point, do we have any, oh, Alderman Matthew, and then Mila Wambly?
So actually, my question is for Jim. When you said that the water leak protection was foundational, that wording suggests to me that, no, they would not consider these if we could, the serve line would not consider them separately. So I guess to Karen's question is, in a hypothetical situation, the council did not want to do the water leak protection, could we still do the, that's exactly what I thought you were going to say.
That's why the wording's foundational.
It's either both of them or neither of them.
No, no. Foundational means that you, if you vote for the leak protection, let's say you say, "No, we don't want the leak protection," then you don't have an option to do the opt-in sewer lateral and water line protection. If you did the leak protection, you don't have to do the other. I'm not sure why you would, because then people have the choice to whether they would choose to, but you could choose to not offer that as an option. So that's, that's the, those are the choices you have.
Okay. Thank you, that's what I thought you were saying.
So only if this, so only if this vote passes, do we have the option of the second vote? Gotcha.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure we had clarity on that.
And just to clarify for the public, this is, if people don't want in, they can say no, as you said, and get a full refund anytime within the first year if they don't want to pay the buck a month.
And even after that, they can, they can choose to opt out of the program at any point and just stop, and then the, if they wanted to start up again, it would just only be a 30-day waiting period until they would be eligible once they start back up.
I see. Alderman Mila Wambly?
I always get worried when I see the mental gymnastics on the floor. So I'm wondering if, is there, could we wait until next Monday and just kind of make sure that we are all on the right track, or how time-sensitive is this? Because I'm just seeing us going back and forth, back and forth, and people clarifying and re-clarifying, and that worries me.
I think what I would offer is, if there's cleanup to bring these as two separate agenda items, we can do that on the 17th. It was my understanding that really none of the questions or concerns from the community are anything that has not been covered in the two previous presentations, but there might be value tonight to walk through this yet one more time. So really, the decision falls back to you guys. If you want this cleaned up to bring separately at the next meeting, we can do that. If there's a way for us to communicate, again, basically the same information as in the past, we can do that as well. If there's a decision or somewhat of a consensus out of council, and we think that the insurance portion of what is being discussed, or has been discussed, and what's before council tonight, that there's not a lot of interest in that, I'd just assume not even bring it before council if it's going to get voted down.
Well, we do have the first motion, and then that can perhaps give some sort of indication. But I, if I could ask Alderman Wambly, I'm not sure what's not clear. You can opt in, or you can opt out. I mean, we've been talking about this, as you say, I don't know what, given another week would help us do.
Actually, I'm clear. I'm ready to vote on it as presented, but it's just that I was seeing us going back and forth and trying to clarify many things, and which motion, and amending and not amending, and those, so that, that just kind of, usually when that happens, that tells me that maybe it's not quite ready, and so I just wanted to be sure that we, you know, if we're feeling a little bit unsure about this, then if there is no urgency, you know, in terms of voting on it tonight, we can, the staff can do all the background work to make it ready for next week, if it's two separate motions or one motion, and then we're done. That's all.
Okay. Right. And I just want to clarify, our legal counsel suggested that we can't, we could do that ourselves. But Alderman Burgess, Sage, and Schmidt?
I just want to make sure I understand what the motion on the floor is. So the motion, am I correct, that the motion is just to change how we would vote on it? We're not actually voting on anything other than to change what our, what our potential vote is? I was terribly worried. So we'll have two votes. So basically, there'll be the first motion to bifurcate it, or there'll be the first vote to bifurcate it, then after that, I would assume there's a second motion to approve the first portion of the bifurcated motion? Is that what you're foreseeing? Because I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on.
I simply wanted to break it into two motions, one for the leak protection and one for the water and sewer line protection.
So the motion is only to do that, to break it into two votes? And then we're going to vote two more times?
My motion actually said that we would approve the leak protection opt-out option at a dollar five a month.
Right.
Okay, so the first motion is to separate them and vote on the first portion of it?
Right, yes.
Is that your intention, the second, or? Yes, okay. I just wanted, just to clarify that part for the record. That was my understanding as well.
Okay. I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on. Thank you.
So if there truly is that kind of confusion amongst us, I can guarantee you, there is some confusion out amongst the community.
Well, I'm not confused about what we're voting on, over the, overall, big picture. I'm just want to make sure I understand the motion, because it would be my preference to vote on the mass present it. So if this were simply to change how we're voting, I might be more likely to vote no. However, I support both proposals, so I don't want to accidentally vote no if I don't vote.
Yeah, I understand, yes. So, yeah. So right now, what we would be voting on is simply the leak protection.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Sage?
Thank you. And Mboka, I think you make a good point. I guess, let me say initially, I had maybe a high-level understanding, this was going to be pulled tonight anyway, maybe the last piece of information I saw was going to be pulled, so I was a little surprised that it wasn't. I will tell you one thing that hasn't been talked about in the two previous conversations, and it was a conversation that I had with Jim after the last public conversation, was that, and I recalled that about five or six years ago, staff came to the council and wanted to develop a policy. Now, in terms of who was going to be responsible for the sewer lateral and the water, you know, the water laterals. Now, it was suggested in our last public conversation that our practice had been that residents were responsible for that, that however, I don't think is our policy. Is that correct, Jim?
So I've been a public works director for 10 years. Over the 10-year period, the intent of the code is clear. It says that the sewer lateral line up to and including the T is the private property owner. The practice that I, whenever I started with the two city managers ago, it was that when there were instances that caused the safety of citizens, such that the walking public or the driving public had any sort of concern with impact, the city would go in and try to repair that line. Well, that, to me, is, that was, I wanted to make sure we were clear, if the city code and the practice, hence we provided some, trying to, let's clean that language up, and to make sure we were clear. So, yes, that was the past conversation that we had had, and so hopefully that makes sense.
So our ordinance, and thus our policy, says that the resident is responsible across the parkway, and perhaps even under the street, is responsible for the laterals off the mains.
And that's, yes, and that is also what the, all the packet says, all of the different graphics and diagrams that you have seen have said as well.
But my point is, is that's not necessarily the understanding, as we just heard in public comment, that there's still some confusion as to, as to what the homeowner is actually responsible for. So then, then I'll circle back around again and say, what I am most uncomfortable about this with is that you're asking residents to be responsible for water and sewer lines underground that they have no control over, whether it's work in the street, whether it's work in the parkway? They have no control over how that work is done, whether their water lines and sewer lines are properly, you know, guarded and protected, that there's not some, you know, incidental negligence by people doing that work. So when we, we are in effect, and I guess in my mind, we're codifying that accountability, we're transferring that risk to the homeowner if they sign up for the, for the insurance.
Just to be clear, tonight, as a staff, we are not suggesting a change, nor have we said that in any of the packet, a change in our current practice or the city code. This is a voluntary opt-in program for people to be able to address their private laterals. So no, tonight is not a night where we're suggesting a change in that, or clearing it up, or anything of that nature.
Oh, so if people opt out, then the city will continue the practice of repairing those laterals that are, that are on city property?
Within the criteria that I just got done saying. We have a lot of times where people are responsible for their sewer lateral. There are many times when they are by code responsible for their sewer lateral. Again, the practice of what we have done is that if it impacts the traveling driving public or the walking public on the street or the sidewalk, that's where our staff has gone in to make those repairs. Originally, it was being done to protect our citizens and the safety of our citizens for people who didn't fix necessarily their sewer lines. So that was the reason for that, that practice, as I recall.
So where does this, where does the practice that the city applies, where does that happen? What is, what is the area between the main and someplace else where then the city says, "Our practice is not to fix it from past this point"? Is it, you know, under, on the other side of the sidewalk?
Anywhere in the right of way. No, it's, the code is, it's including the sewer lateral up to and including the T. It doesn't matter where the line is. It doesn't matter where the line is, is that within the right-of-way? The sewer line, the public sewer line, some sewer lines are closer to the house. They're on that side of the street.
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the laterals, Jim, not the mains.
Sure, but the laterals have to get to the mains. And so if the sewer main is on the, the far side of the street, that I think is what you're suggesting. So it, within the right-of-way that the city controls, it is anywhere within that right-of-way still. The lateral is for the intent and purpose of the people who use it. So it's kinda like a driveway. Your driveway is your responsibility. And the same way, your sewer lateral is there to serve your house and your house alone, it is your responsibility.
I must have a sewer block here of some kind, because I am not, uh, I'm not, I'm, I'm not understanding this. Are you telling me that I'm accountable? And I'll, this is, cause I, it's hard for me to talk so theoretical about this. If, if a contractor does work in the street and damages my water line, am I, am I accountable to have that fixed?
And this is the same conversation we had last time. That it, if somebody else damages your private lateral, then they're, the city is out of it. The other people are responsible for whatever damage you can prove that they did.
Let's say the city does it then.
Okay, then the city would then be responsible for the damage that we would be proven to have done. Again, some of this is, you're, you're getting into some of the nuances of legal, uh, who's responsible. And, and what I'm saying, here, let me be clear. City code, city code says that, I'll say it again, the lateral up to and including the main. And so that is the private homeowner's responsibility. And so, um, the, anything beyond that, the, the public main is ours to fix. But that private lateral, tonight, what we're talking about is opt-in insurance to help people provide protection for that. Not required, but in a lot of our areas of the community, people have varying degrees of what their insurance allows them to be able to do. Some, some insurance companies have some great options, others do not. And so this was just another option for citizens to be able to choose.
So again, I wanna be, I wanna make sure I'm clear. So anywhere between the foundation of my house and the main, whether it is the water or the sewer, is my responsibility to fix if it's broken?
No, you just added water. Just sewer is what we've been talking about. Water is a different issue.
Oh, but then let's.
Sorry, you, you'd said, so, same thing again. It's from the, from your house to the, the public main is your, is the, is the private homeowner's responsibility?
That's been our, so, so, so even though it goes under the sidewalk, city property, the parkway, city property, the street, city property, if there's sections of that lateral, before it gets to the main, I'm responsible for fixing those?
Yes.
That's what the policy says, but that's not been our practice.
That's what the city code says.
That's what the city code says, but that's not been our practice. Okay?
Our practice has deviated from the city code, as I said before, yes, depending upon those emergency circumstances.
Under emergency, but most of the time it doesn't. Most of the time, it's your responsibility.
Correct, that's right. That's why it is certain circumstances, correct.
And your analogy was the driveway. The driveway goes over.
Correct.
Okay. Um, let's see. Alderman Schmidt?
Um, so I, I wanna speak directly to the water leak policy, um, the opt-out one for a dollar five. And we, when we talk about the water leak protection policy, we're talking about from the water main into your house. This is the leaky toilets, the, you know, dripping faucets that you ignore, all those kinds of things. And I, I have to say that, um, I was kinda surprised at the responses that I got. People were either passionately like, this is a fabulous idea, because like Jamie, they've had these spikes in their water. Or this is a terrible idea. Why are you forcing us to take this insurance? And, um, as, as I've worked through it logically, I, I am, I want to support this, because if we don't have the leak protection, then all the people who are so enthusiastic will never have that opportunity. Which then leads me to, what can we do as a city? And I don't wanna hammer this out tonight, but what can we do as a city to make it crystal clear to people in their water bills, however we do it, you know, for several months, that, hey, you don't want, you don't have to pay this dollar five if you don't want to? Um, I think there's a, a sense that people are gonna just not look at their water bill, city services bill, see the dollar five, and, and, you know, not even necessarily pay attention to it. So whatever we can do in terms of, um, public relations and education about what this is, and, and how, I, I believe it's set up so that if somebody has a water spike, they're dealing, um, the, the city is dealing with serveline directly. I mean, I don't think that there's a, we're not passing money around three parties.
If the city passes the leak protection, then the call is to serveline to make that adjustment, that's correct. And they work with the city.
And obviously, making sure that the resident is repairing this, yeah. So, um, I just wa, I just wanted to make a pitch for that extra education.
So, the couple.
Just to make it clear, in other words, that you don't want it, nobody's forcing you to take it.
Right, I mean, many of the things that you said tonight, I think, bear repeating several times, that you can, you can opt out of this at any time. It's not a, a lifelong, um, responsibility or contractual obligation. Yeah.
If the council passes this, every time you get a call that says, the city's forcing me, great, here's the phone number. Call tomorrow, and they'll get you out of the program.
Right, and, but whatever we can do in our, in our bills, and, and the other part of that is making it very clear to people how we can, how they can look at their water usage, so that they can see the kind of graphs like that Jamie showed, shared with us the other, the other day, of, you know, that water spike that you don't, maybe that, that visual is a, a powerful one. It's a little hard to find on our website.
From a communications manager standpoint, Nora Dukowitz already has been, signed this. She's already, you know, she's, she's on top of this. She has, she'll hit a home run with it. She's already been working with our team to be able to get ready, to be able to address that. So we definitely see that as a win. That's what she'll do. She'll do a great job of it. And so I, I, I think that will hopefully address that concern.
Alderman, uh, let's see, Alderwoman Burgess, you refer next, okay, Alderman Black.
I'd like to call the question, please.
Okay, all right. So, again, the, uh, motion here is to approve the dollar five-only portion of what is presented. That motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. Now we have the, uh, other portion of this that we could act on, uh, or not, either positively or negatively, and that is the opt-in. So if you want, anybody who wanted this, it's definitely not forced, cause you have to make the phone call to service line. Is that correct, Mr. Karch? Okay. So is there a, uh, motion, either yes or no, for the four eighty-four, uh, and six sixty per month? Some of, oh, excuse me. Go ahead. Uh, move by Alderman, move by, no, I'll, I'll do the reverse. Move by Alderman Matthews, second by Alderwoman Burgess. Do you wanna speak to that Alderwoman Burgess?
Um, just briefly, I, I've heard a lot from my residents in my ward about this particular portion of it. Um, there's support for both, but in this one, um, there's broad support for it, because it brings another option to residents. Because residents, especially in older neighborhoods, are aware of their potential liability. I know there's been different, um, ways that the code has been interpreted over the year when it comes to that public right-of-way portion, but no matter what, everyone is still responsible if they have a failure, um, under their own property. And so this just, it provides another option. Residents want it. The only thing I would just say again, which I said last time, is I think during our education program, assuming this passes, we need to make it clear that this is not people's only option. But that we're just bringing, just bringing another option to our residents, and that they should vigorously explore what their best option is.
And to clarify that they won't pay one penny unless they decide to do it. Yeah. Uh, Alderwoman Painter, excuse me.
Well, I also wanna make it clear, because people have questions about this, that they have to have the water coverage before they can get the other two coverages. That they can't do the other two without having the coverage for the water loss.
That's a great point.
Just clearing that up.
You have to have the dollar five before you can go on.
Right.
That's excellent point. Uh, Alderman Black.
Thank you. All I'll add is that, um, while, um, these topics don't get a lot of attention, I, I think the conversation that I just saw between, uh, Jim and Dave was clear that we need to revisit a policy-level discussion on these sorts of things. Um, because I think a lot of residents would be surprised to hear, if our practice is, you know, what you're saying, then let's just make it our policy. Um, and maybe that's a, a parking lot topic for 2019, uh, to, to look at the ramifications of that policy, and, uh, if we need to adjust it, maintain it, or, or what.
I just, if I, if I could ask Mr. Karch, and then I will get to Alderwoman Bray, just one, uh, quick question. If you know, uh, the, the few times I've had conversations, and it's actually been several years, cause we did have an Alderwoman, uh, years ago, suggest that we take ownership over all of the, the water mains. And I did ask other, I could not find a mayor who had a city, again, these can be metro mayors, but, you know, uh, who had a city where they covered everything. Is that your experience?
Our experience in, in Illinois is that, uh, within the right-of-way, it's almost always people's responsibility. And in the sewer master plan, we actually had them look at that. And it was an eighty million dollar liability if the city said, we wanna take all of that, the city, that the city code currently frees us up from. And so that was a, that was a big concern from staff's perspective when we looked at that from a liability perspective. So we've actually done extensive research in other communities, what are the general practices, what are the different options? So we were, we were, we were ready to have that conversation.
Thank you. Alderwoman, hang around in case Alderwoman Bray.
Thank you, Mayor Renner. When you call this to vote, I'll recuse myself as my employer offers a competing coverage.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, at this point, seeing no other comments, if everyone will go ahead and vote on the motion as presented. The motion carries six to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Sage and Alderman Schmidt.
Okay. Thank you very much. And now we move on to the regular portion of, of our meeting. Well, sort of, excuse me, we're not, not regular portion. I lied. I apologize. It's public hearing portion. And so I'm gonna go ahead and call the public hearing to order for revised citizen participation plan concerning policies and procedures for public involvement and stakeholder consultation in the consolidated plan process for the use of the community development block grant, CDBG, uh, funds, as requested by the community development department. And so is there anyone who would like to speak on this subject? Again, unlike our public comment where you can speak on anything, it has to be, uh, very specific and precise on the CDBG money. If you would, please come forward, and then, uh, we know you, but if you would state your name for the record and sign in, please. Thank you.
My name's Alicia Henry. I'm a twenty-eight-year resident of Bloomington. And I'm not sure if I completely understood the purpose of the public hearing tonight. I thought that you were soliciting public input for ways to spend the money, but it appears it's more of a policy discussion, or, is it, may I make some?
I think you can make any comment related to CDBG money that we spent, either in specifics or in a policy standpoint.
Um, I saw the amount of money, and I thought, wow, this would be great. And I had some ideas of ways that I think would be good to spend it. And I thank you for soliciting public input for that. One of the things that I think about was that, uh, the horrible fire that could have resulted in the loss of life in Bloomington in the last year. And it seemed to me that a lot of, uh, infractions and the, let's say, the, um, neglect of the apartments that were concerned, where people could have died, had to do with the fact that, um, there was a tremendous overload on the part, for the city, as far as being able to inspect and get to all of these apartments. And there are so many around the city that have, are pretty derelict. And I would suggest that some of the money be devoted to hiring more inspectors, um, so that the people can get around to inspecting, um, places more readily, or let's say more frequently. That, I think that would be something that would be a good thing to address with community, um, block money. I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion. Perhaps it doesn't have to be a regular inspector, uh, maybe there is another classification if it's too expensive for the city to employ a lot of more people. But it does seem that, um, a lot of, um, the problems, the violations, had been around for a very long time. And I know it's, the people who are doing the job are working really hard, and it's hard for them to get around to everything. So that was one thing I wanted to suggest, because a lot of low-income and middle-income people are impacted by the lack of, um, let's say, care on the part of the people who own the buildings. And I think that would be good. Um, another thing I thought about would be to, and, and this comes up, when I thought about how the District Eighty-seven is contributing some money to the move of, um, playground equipment from the west side of O'Neill Park to an area closer to Sheridan School. Thought that was a very positive move, and it's a nice way to have different government entities contributing something. I hope that's safe. I worry about the, um, kids having to cross the street there. But then it brought up to mind, um, for me, uh, the need for more parks with playgrounds. And I live close to White Oak Lake, um, where there is a playground in the south section, and has been for about fifteen or twenty years. But when I first moved there about twenty-eight years ago, we had a very nice playground on the north side of the park as well. There are hundreds and hundreds of children who live near the park. And they took away the playground about twenty years ago. And when I called to complain about it, I was told that there were complaints from the people in the condos nearby, or whatever. I, it's, it wasn't even a big playground. But now that I have grandchildren who come to visit me, it's a long trip to get to the south section. And a lot of people can only access the southern playground in White Oak Lake, at White Oak Park, by driving there. And I think it would be nice to make it more walkable. It's an opportunity for people from the area to the north, the people around the park, and the people who live in the area, um, along Seminary. It would be very nice for all the residents to have a good park. And the other thing I'm concerned about is sort of, I know that there's, there are a lot of parks in the city of Bloomington, but maybe devoting some extra care to the one at the south end, cause last summer I found a lot of things broken there. And so I think that that would be a nice thing to address, so. Um, I'm glad that you're soliciting public input, and I think that's a really good policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Anyone else wanna speak on the CDBG as a public hearing? Going once, oh, excuse me.
All right. Hello, my name is Noah Tang. I'm a resident of Normal. Um, and I, I saw this.
Noah Tang, could you sign in for us there?
Yes.
Or?
I, I haven't been to.
We will, we will look at that.
Okay, all right. Um, I saw this, uh, on a, on a story on WGLT, and I thought, um, this would, um, be very fruitful for both Bloomington and Normal to, kinda to work together, kinda develop this, um, this action plan, to kinda transition people who are currently renting in poorer communities inside our, um, our twin cities to homeowners. So a, one way that this, uh, can occur is through, uh, something called the Community Housing Trust, where, um, um, an entity would be formed that would create, um, would buy up, uh, properties in certain parts of the, the city, and with the purpose of only selling the house on top of it to residents. And they would have that house for ninety-nine years. And that immediately lowers the barrier for, um, homeownership. That's something that could be looked into this, to this affordable housing, uh, grant, because, um, we don't want to keep, um, we don't want this large proportion of renters in the community, because the more homeowners you have in the community, the more stable it is. And I feel like having this lowered barrier to homeownership in Bloomington and Normal would greatly improve, improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on CDBG? I'm gonna go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. We move on then to our regular agenda. And our first item under our regular agenda is consideration of a resolution adopting a revised public, excuse me, citizen participation plan containing policies and procedures for public involvement and stakeholder consultation in the consolidated plan process and the use of community development block grant, CDBG, funds. Again, this is, uh, just a, this is just a, a recommendation. We have a brief conversation. Mr. Gleason, if you could clarify, we have a, a couple people, uh, uh, seem to be confused in the audience. We're not allocating cash. Correct?
Correct, actually. Uh, we have staff. Jennifer Tony is our, uh, grants administrator with the city and the community development department. And she's got a, uh, brief presentation that, uh, Jennifer, if you would, step to the mic. Uh, but the work that we're doing now in the public hearing that we just did here is in preparation for our next, uh, five-year plan. Uh, that won't be effective until 2020, but, uh, with HUD, we've got, uh, some work to do to be prepared for, uh, that day. Uh, Jennifer?
Thanks. Um, he made my introduction really easy. So thanks for, uh, letting me have a little bit of your time tonight to talk about our, um, citizen participation plan and the updates that we hope that you'll approve tonight. The citizen participation plan is not the plan of. The citizen participation plan is not the plan of how we're going to spend our money. And I, I appreciate the time of the folks that came out tonight to kind of start the ball, the ball rolling on that, but we're not quite there yet. This plan is the plan that tells us how we have to plan for the plan. Kind of, yeah, yeah. So there's a reason why there's confusion out there. But essentially what this does is it's a policy that's going to outline how we're going to engage the community in a meaningful way to let them have input on, um, how we're going to, how we should spend that money. Looking at what the community feels that they need. So, um, there's some changes, um, that are necessary right now. First of all, the plan that we have in place, we're required by law to have one, so we have one. But, um, the current plan is from 2012. So it's always nice to take a look at it every once in a while to make sure that it's still in compliance with the regulations. So that's one reason why we want to update it now. The second reason is that we will begin planning for the 2020 consolidated plan early in 2019. So this is the horse that we need to put before the cart. Because, um, or the cart that we have to have before the horse, how would that be? Anyway, um, it's the first step to make sure that we have the correct procedures in place and that we're doing things as we need to do. So, um, those are the two main reasons why we're looking at updating it. There's not a ton of changes in the actual content. Uh, we reviewed it, um, with the help of the McLean County Regional Planning Commission. And, um, it's, we're still in compliance. But the biggest thing, there's two big things that I want to point out. First of all, is the way that it looks. If you noticed it in the packet, um, it's actually a document now that you might want to pick up and read. Uh, and that's all on behalf of McLean County Regional Planning Commission, so kudos to those. So we, we've taken a very boring word document that even I don't like to read and made it something that's, that's engaging. So that's the, one of the things. But the most important thing that is the change is that this is, uh, we're proposing a joint plan between the city and the town of Normal. So our comprehensive, a comprehensive plan supports it through, um, the goal H1 dot one I, creating a regional housing plan to address housing issues in Bloomington, Normal and McLean County. So we've already kind of started that process in our department. Uh, the first step was a regional housing study that was finalized, um, late last year. So it's been in place for about a year now. And through that, we have formed a Regional Housing Advisory Committee of McLean County. And with that, um, the representatives from the city, the town, the McLean County, um, Regional Planning Commission, behavior, or Bloomington Housing Authority, McLean County Behavioral Health Coordinating Council and PAST, all have members on this. And so we're starting to look at things regionally. So since the town and the city are already partnering on that project, it just made sense, since both of our consolidated plans have a housing component in it, that we would have a joint document on how we're going to engage our, our residents. There will be portions of the plan, of the consolidated plan, um, that will be combined. So, um, we will have public meetings, public hearings, neighborhood outreach, focus groups. We'll do surveys. And the pieces that make sense for us to do as, uh, do jointly, we will. Cuts down on a lot of work and hopefully will get us some more meaningful information. There will be pieces that will be individualized for our community. Obviously, um, we aren't necessarily going to invite residents to a, a neighborhood meeting that we have in West Bloomington because, you know, and they're not really going to have a lot of input and nor would I expect that we would want our residents, you know, to travel to a neighborhood in Normal. But there are issues that are regional, like, um, the homeless, uh, situation in, in our community of being, uh, Bloomington and Normal, that we would want to maybe hold a focus group with service providers. And it makes sense to do that once instead of doing it twice. So this, this plan will help allow that. As an entitlement community, each community will continue to submit their own consolidated plan to HUD. We'll have some goals that are community-based, very specific to Bloomington. But there are going to be some areas of it that will overlap and that'll be combined. So we don't know 100% what that's going to look like yet until we get into it and we get the template for the next plan. But we want to do as much of this jointly. So it makes sense to start with a joint citizen participation plan. Any questions?
Just to clarify then, this, the process in effect, which began tonight, with the opening of a public hearing, comment to several people, uh, one from public comment. We're going to be opening this up, continued dialogue, continued discussion. And the plan is March 15th of 2020?
Is when it'll be due, yeah. So we will actually start the public engagement early in 19.
15 months roughly, process began this evening.
Yeah, and then that plan will be a five-year plan.
Okay. Alderwoman Schmidt, I know you're...
Oh, what am I? The wrong button, too many buttons. I would just like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for the revised citizen participation plan.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder, oh, excuse me, I was about to sneeze. Excuse me, Alderwoman Painter. And, um, Alderman Matthews, you had your light on.
I did. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for doing this and making it readable. And I thought you did a really nice job on the radio this morning. I'm assuming that was you, I couldn't tell, I logged in a little bit late.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was a good discussion on the idea that we don't know if participation is because everybody's happy or we don't know if participation is low because people don't know we're doing this. And so the idea that we're revamping it, trying to get more people to weigh in on what's important, I thought that was really good conversation on the radio. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Anything else? All right, if everyone will go ahead and vote? Motion carries, oh, it's over there. Uh, motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move now to our city manager's discussion. Oops, sorry, Mr. Gleason?
Actually, just a couple of items and then I'll turn it over to you, Mayor. Scott, do we have a schedule of events for the upcoming week? And in the meantime, uh, leaf collection update. Uh, it's my understanding from, uh, Public Works Director Karch, that, uh, we have made one entire pass of the city and we're beginning our second pass, uh, here, if we've not done it already. It's, uh, coming, uh, very soon. And then also regarding leaf collection, the update, the map will be updated tomorrow. So wanted to share that with the community. Also wanted to share, uh, that, uh, as a practice for council meetings, uh, when we have new board members' appointments, stuff like that for committees or boards of the, uh, city, those will be done at a meeting. And then the second meeting, or the meeting after, uh, under the mayor's comments, those individuals will be invited, uh, but do not have to attend a meeting. But something very similar to the events downtown will be brought up as a slide under the mayor's portion at the next meeting again. And that will, uh, identify those that were appointed or reappointed to different boards and commissions. Just wanted to share that.
After the fact?
Yes, sir.
Great, just wanted to clarify that.
And that'll do it for me, thank you.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank, uh, Alderwoman Schmidt for, uh, handling the mayor's open house. And, uh, also I gathered the tree lighting ceremony as well. Uh, I was, uh, I was not 100% sure, it was like about 5:31 when I was coming back into town. I was doing a, uh, taped, uh, television show with Chris Coos in, uh, public television in Peoria. I thought, okay, would it be, uh, would it look rude if I came in a little late? Or, you know, didn't come in at all. So I had to make one of those calls, but thank you so much. And I do want to get call special attention to our distinguished city manager, who, and we want to congratulate him because he has just been named the Chairman of the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board just this past week. Congratulations, Mr. Gleason. And that's all I have. Anybody else? Is there a motion to adjourn then? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, someone had a... Oh, yes, bad mayor, okay. We are going to, I mean, entertain a motion for executive session and just so the media and the public knows, you are absolutely welcome to hang around. But all we're going to do is adjourn when we come back. If, if, it could be riveting, you never know. Okay, at this point, can we have a motion to go into executive session? Uh, moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, second by Alderwoman Black. Madam?
Statement as to why you're going in?
Oh, yes. And, and, what's the section? Yeah, but, uh, we don't need a section number, just review of minutes is all we need to say?
That's right.
Okay, review of minutes, okay. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
I'm just making sure I have it on.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Bray?
Yes.
Alderman Matthews?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Malamoy?
Yes.
Alderman Burgess?
Yes.
Alderman Painter?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Harmon?
Yes.
Okay.